Public School District Board of Education regular meeting on June 22, 2021. Hybrid meeting in the boardroom building 51331 East Cali. California. My name is Chris Norwood, I'm the board president. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our educational proceedings which are currently being conducted virtually with limited capacity pursuant to the executive order in 2520 and in 2920 issued by the California government. As a governing body of a public school district, our proceedings align with the guidance set forth by the Ralph Brown Act for open meetings. There are currently three ways to move to our hybrid style meeting online, on either Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom, but we have limited capacity seating so ensure social distance measures are being met. Public comments can be made when you are logging to Zoom or if you're in person, you still have to ring speaker card and hand it to the communication specialist. YouTube, however, is a listen option. For our virtual audience, you will see instructions to public comment on your screen. Our communication specialist will go over there. For our in-person audience, please go to the poll you're called upon. Instructions for both are listed on each agenda. There are copies and mail at the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. To respect everyone's time, our communication specialist will take it from here.
Thank you, President Norwood. As you see on the screen, public comments, if you are joining us via Zoom, you will click the raise your hand icon and please keep your hand raised the entire time until you're called upon. You'll wait. We will call the names in the order they are received. We will tell you that your audio has been enabled. You'll listen for your name and go from there. You'll have two minutes to talk. When it's your turn, you will see a timer counting down. And again, we just ask you to please be patient. The board president will call for any public comment at the appropriate time. Public comments, members of the public may address the board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We also have special accommodations. If you do need assistance or special accommodation, please call at least two business days prior to the meeting, 408-635-2600, extension 6031. We are broadcasting, as you know, on Zoom and YouTube. Also, we have closed captions available. On Zoom, you just click the live transcription and it'll appear on your screen. Also, if there are any additional documents that were not part of the agenda that's online or physically in here, we will have those in the boardroom here and for anybody at the district office. Thank you so much. Back to you, board president.
If this is not how I can call them into order? Board President Norwood here. Vice President Yip Chong.
Here.
Work quickly, how many?
Here.
Board Member Michael Tsai.
Board Member Min Ho.
Here.
And our student rep Amy Stanley and Effie Mathles have graduated and will not be. At this time, I'd like to review and approve the closed session agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the seconds. The roll call will. Or quickly end. Or, yeah.
Yes.
Vice President Yip Chong.
Yes.
Board Member No.
Yes.
Or President Chris Norwood, yes. Motion approved. We're closing the agenda. Let's now go.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Are there, before we go into closed session agenda, we have to confirm whether there are any comments from the public?
There are no public comments at this time.
Good evening, everybody. The Board of Education just got out of closed session and we'll be starting public session momentarily. Thank you.
Shortly. In closed sessions, the board approved the following actions. I can do my own echo. Pursuant, pursuant, pursuant. Pursuant to the California Government Code, Section 54957.1, the board voted unanimously unanimously to accept the settlement offer signed by the plaintiff in the case Tracy Soder versus the Milpitas Unified School District pursuant to the terms of the agreement, the plaintiff will dismiss dismiss the case in exchange for payment of $48,000 to plaintiff to the district, payment of $39,500 to the plaintiff's counsel by South Bay Area School Insurance Authority, a credit of 266 hours of sick leave to plan a sick leave balance, raising plaintiff from step 13 on certificated salary schedule to step 16. In closed session, the board trustees unanimously approve the superintendent's recommendation for the position of supervisor, maintenance operation and transportation custodial. In closed session, the Board of Trustees unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation for the position of executive director of inclusive services for all learners. In closed session, the Board of Trustees unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation for the position of program manager inclusion. In closed session, the Board of Trustees unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation for the position of middle, college, high school principal. In closed session, the Board of Trustees unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation for the position of coordinator one, MUSD, educate everywhere, virtual pathways and independent study K-12. This time, I'd like someone to review and approve the open session agenda.
Move to approve and review the open session agenda.
We have a motion to approve the open session agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Roll call vote for President Norwood, yes. For Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
For Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
For Member Si.
Yes.
Yes. For Member No.
Yes.
Motion carries. Open session. At this time, we will have a flag salute led by the NJROTC of Milpitas High School. Gotta do that again. You'll get better at the second time, don't worry.
Good evening. I'm Cadet Nguyen and joining me today will be Cadet Balchico and we both represent the Milpitas High School NJROTC unit. Please rise, remove your caps and join with me in the flag salute. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public. For those on Zoom, please click the raise your hand button to keep your hand raised and you will be called upon in order. For those in the boardroom, you must fill out the green speaker card and hand it to the communication specialist. Once you hand it to the communication specialist, which is Scott, he'll hand it to me and then we will allow for those wishing to speak on a during a specific agenda item will be called on at the appropriate time. When it is your turn, please state your name, address, and if you have any students in the district before you make a public comment. You will have two minutes to make a public comment. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. For those speaking on any subject not on tonight's agenda, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and 3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the board or district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Thank you for your participation in this civic engagement. Scott, how would you like to go? Are we going to go with the potential Zoom first or are we going to go with the in-person?
I don't see any hand raised online at the moment, so let's start with the in-person.
Okay, um, we have Bill Chuan for the NJROTC.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay, thank you, President Norwood, Vice President Yip Chuan, Superintendent Jordan, board members and staff. Just wanted to make one announcement for the public. On July 12th through July 23rd, the NJROTC will be putting together a mini boot camp from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's Monday through Friday, so if there's anyone out there looking for something to do for their high school students or even eighth grade students going into ninth grade, come out and join the NJROTC. If there's any questions, you can send an email to Lieutenant Jackson at m jackson at musd.org. I will be having the on Facebook an announcement as well too. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for your continued commitment to work with the NJROTC.
There are still no hands raised, so no online public comments.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Item 10 was public comments. Item 11, MUSD 2018, 2021 strategic calls. For member No, if you'd be so kind to read the MUSD 2018 through 2021 strategic calls.
Sure. Thank you, Board President. Build a culture we that engages parents, staff and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion and learning for their future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments.
Thank you. And at our most likely one of our early meetings for 2021, 2022, we will revisit these because these have the three-year life from 2018 to 2021. So that's something that we have to look forward to. Item 12, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Norwood, and hello, MUSD and community members. This is our last board meeting of the 2021, 2021 school year. And it's been a very unique, difficult, wonderful, extraordinary year, and it took all of us to get here. And I thank each one of you for your commitment to ensuring that every one of our learners was able to continue learning throughout the pandemic and your commitment to each other to building a sense of community even with a screen between us. And your commitment and dedication to wrapping your arms around our learners within our school district. learners within our school district, whether you're a person in the city government, a person in a service orientation, a person in a community group, or one of our parents, an adult who's a caring person for a student who maybe doesn't have a parent, or a student yourselves, and the extraordinary ways that you reached out to your peers as well as those who are younger than you to create opportunities for learning, ingenuity, creativity, and excellence. I'm very proud to be the superintendent of this district and is with deep gratification that I could say we made it. And it is a big "we." So even through the difficult times that we had, through the disagreements, the heartache, the loss, the tears, we got through it. I want to thank every single one of you. I look forward to next year because it's going to be one heck of an extraordinary year. With that, I would like to welcome some new members to our team as well as some members of our team who are taking on new roles. I'd like to start first with our new executive director of Inclusive Services for All Learners. She is currently our Director of Student Services and Special Education, but as of July one, Mary J. Dorpinghaus will co-lead with a future executive director who we are still in the process of recruiting. Ms. Dorpinghaus?
Thank you. Thank you, President Norwood, Vice President Yip Chuan, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Jordan, and Executive Cabinet. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm humbled and grateful and excited. You know, it was just about ten months ago I was entering into MUSD, and I remember, I don't remember a lot of what I said because I was doing it virtually, so it's really nice to be able to to accept this position tonight in person, but I do know I talked about the culture of "we." That is one thing that stood out in my heart, and it drew me to MUSD. And I remember when I was even doing my my letter or part of my application, I realized MUSD has "us" in the acronym. You know, "us" in special ed, we love our acronyms, and so M U S D has "us" in it. And so for me, it's really exciting to have this new position, which is all about "us" or all about "we," and the tenet of the strategic plan, the culture of "we" that Superintendent Jordan mentioned, and and Trustee No mentioned as well. So I'm really looking forward to having continued work with the directors and the leaders within our department and creating partnerships and creating alignment and work that way. I'm really excited about new people coming into the district and my future partner as we co-lead together in this. And then I just really want to say thank you to the Executive Cabinet for this opportunity and their support over the last year. It's been incredible. You hung on waiting for me to come, and you, Jonathan, I remember saying, "What I tell you today, I will stay true to my word," and you have. You always were there when I called, and I just really appreciate that. And both all of the cabinet has been very supportive of helping me to get onboarded this year, and I just have to say, I know Norma, I know Norma, you want to keep coming to these meetings, no matter where you are. So but truthfully, Norma's been a huge gift to me. It's under her tutelage this year that I've learned a great deal about the way of Milpitas and from all of you as well. So thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited to forge ahead with innovation and partnerships and leadership, co-leading together with my future partner, whoever that may be. So thank you again.
Thank you. And next, we have a new position called Coordinator One of MUSD Educate Everywhere Virtual Pathways and Independent Studies. And for K-12, thank you. And Eva Magaña, who is currently the Assistant Principal of Adult Education, will be taking this role. This year, she has been instrumental in leading our Safety First Team and ensuring that all of our preparation and the requirements for keeping people safe throughout COVID, she has been there night and day, literally, seven days a week, helping us navigate through answering questions when some of our team members had COVID themselves. And she actually comes from a background where she has, in addition to being an administrator in an adult school, also being a classified employee in a unified high school district and has been a teacher, a high school teacher. She's also been an online instructor. So pre-COVID, she's had experience doing virtual learning, and she's been investigating and talking with people about how to take our Independence Days program and make it virtual, and so she'll be leading our small virtual pathway, which will have almost three hundred students K-12 within it. And she'll also provide some consultation to adult school for online learning. So I'd like to welcome, as Eva Magaña, into her new role beginning July one.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank, of course, the Board of Trustees, the Executive Cabinet, of course, Superintendent Jordan, for providing a much-needed virtual pathway for students to be able to allow them to continue to be successful. We know there's a group of students have just been thriving in the virtual environment, so I'm really, really excited that the district is providing this opportunity for the students to continue with their success. And I do know, in speaking with families there, very excited as well, so that's, that makes me even more enthusiastic about being able to lead this pathway. So I'm really appreciative of the opportunity and to be able to really serve our families in a different capacity as well as our greater MUSD team. And I do also want to just take a moment to thank, as you mentioned, the multiple thought partners that we've had because we have an amazing MUSD team, as you all know. Our principals, assistant principals, assistant superintendents, all of us have really, they've all been really supportive of this pathway and process and really providing a lot of partnerships. So I want to thank the team for their thoughts along the way as well. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to serve in this new role.
Thank you, Ms. Magaña.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Principal Juliana Brahim of our adult school for thinking creatively about how she can move forward and using the capacity of program managers who already exist in the program so that they will not need to have an assistant principal. Next, we have a person who's been with us as an English teacher at Calaveras Hills High School, later became the Assistant Principal at Calaveras Hills High School, and then had a split position between being middle, Milpitas High School Assistant Principal Support, and Calaveras Hills High School Assistant Principal. And this current year, served as the coordinator of Dual Enrollment and Alternative Pathways, Ms. Carissa Scott. She's worked diligently throughout this year with Assistant Superintendent Norma Rodriguez, with Director Chen Song, with Assistant Principals Skylar Drager and Amanda Gross, as well as Principals Carl Stice and Frances Rojas, and the staff at San Jose City College, Mr. Mike Mooney, Vice President Lena Tran, and deans there to develop our new middle, college, high school. It's its own school. It is not a program. It has its own California County District School ID number, and it launches this fall, and it needs a principal. So we will have Ms. Carissa Scott as that principal, and her current position will be closed. So I'd like to welcome Ms. Carissa Scott.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm very excited as I look forward to the upcoming inaugural year of the middle, college, high school. I want to echo the thanks that Superintendent Jordan extended to all of the pivotal players that have collaborated to really bring forth the best aspects of the middle, college, high school to the district, and we look forward to being an exemplar school in California and nationwide. So thank you for your support and look forward to continuing to expand access for our students, connect their curriculum with their passions, and allow them to access college courses while they're still in high school. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
And next, I'd like to introduce to everybody, if you don't know them already, Mr. Jesus Shigoya. He has been one of our custodians for twenty years. He has a great deal of respect that people pay him for his work at Curtner Elementary School. And prior to being one of our star custodians, Mr. Shigoya also led a team of thirty at a large hotel where he was a sous chef, and so he's had managerial experience. He is big on building capacity. He's also a coach for one of our soccer leagues here in Milpitas. And he has three children, who one of them has graduated already from college, and the other two are are close. And I actually had three of them at Pomeroy when I was the principal. So it's really gratifying to see Mr. Shigoya taking on the leadership role of custodial supervisor for the district, and he with our MOT supervisor for transportation, grounds, and safety, Mr. Jared Acosta, and also Milton Casada, the supervisor for HVAC and electrical together. The three of them are fairly new, and they are all dedicated to building our team, building our systems, and assuring that we have a great foundation to build on as Director Brian Shreve is there to lead the way. So, Mr. Shigoya, I'd like to invite you up.
Well, good evening, everyone. I thank you to the Board of Trustees, Mrs. Jordan, the Secretary of Cabinet, and the interview committee for selecting for the MUSD Supervisor MOT Custodial Position. I started my journey with MUSD back in two thousand. Over the years, I had the great privilege of meeting and working with dynamic staff at Curtner. I will continue to go above and beyond your expectation as I begin my new role in MUSD. I am proud to be part of this community, the power of "we" culture. We continue to be in the forefront as I continue to serve our students' population. Again, I am grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shigoya. And now I'd like to introduce our new program manager for inclusive education. I spoke on the video.
Okay.
So we have Ms. Sarah Davis, who currently is a specialist in Cupertino, and she has a great expansive resume in the area of special education and student advocacy. And she enjoys teaching with a passion, and especially when it comes to inclusive practices and developing those amongst colleagues so that we can better serve our students. And the other unique experience that Ms. Davis has is she's also served as a legal counsel in the area of special education, and she is super excited about this position. It fits all of the vision that she has about how we can better serve learners with exceptional needs. So I'd like to invite you, Ms. Davis, to say a few words.
Hi, thank you so much, distinguished board members, Superintendent Jordan, Executive Cabinet. I'm really grateful and humbled for this opportunity. I've worked and advocated for inclusory practices. It's my, it's my life's work, I would say, for at least two decades. And what really attracted me to Milpitas, I'm not from California, I'm from back east, northeast coast, is the tremendous diversity that your district has, not just with its student population, which is extremely diverse, but also your staff. I was extremely struck. I did a bunch of research, big surprise, lawyer, sort of about your makeup before coming here, and one of the things that I was struck not only by your vision statement and your mission statement, but also your strategic plan, that, you know, this, we all love the culture of "we." I mean, it doesn't, I mean, that's what it's about. It takes a village, right? And everything that I've heard about Milpitas, including the hiring process, which has been incredibly warm and comprehensive and thoughtful and deliberate. I'm extremely excited to come, learn from all of you, and hopefully be able to give back and like to continue like fostering and developing inclusory practices with your district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our recognitions, last Saturday, we had the Senate Girls on the Run. And that was led by several of our team members, Ms. Jeanne Lamb, and Ms. Jeanne Lamb and Patricia Tan, as well as I Fanchu, all from Senate, and I would like to invite you to say a few words, and if you look on the screen, you can see some pictures from the run.
And there is also Coach Carrie Clemente as well, Mrs. Clemente.
I missed that one. Thank you, Ms. Clemente. So would one of you please share a little bit with us about the Girls on the Run?
Sure. It was, actually, we had two teams. One was Girls on the Run for third and fourth graders, and we had another team, Heart and Soul for the fifth and sixth graders. We have some actually online with us. So hello, Goder and Heart and Soul girls. We met on Thursday and Saturdays for the Goder team, and the Heart and Soul team met on Saturdays. It's after-school social, emotional, learning empowerment girls running group. It's not just all about running, but it's also it's also working on how to stand up for yourself, how to cope with your emotions, and of, and also moving forward in everything that you do. So this is, I think it's the sixth year that Senate has had this program, and we love it. So we decided to do an in-person teams this year for, during the virtual learning. So it was a lot of fun.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb, and thank you, everyone. You said you had some of the students with you?
Yes, we do. We have Pronavie, who was part of the Heart and Soul team, my oldest daughter, Tessa Lamb, who was on the Heart and Soul team. And on the Goder team, we have Lucia Clemente, and then also Josie Lamb. And I was just scrolling through to see if anyone else is here. And there might be some on the YouTube viewing.
Terrific. Thank you all for taking time to lead and empower our young girls who will be leaders if they aren't already. And I just want to thank you for sharing this, and please do remember to send an invite to the superintendent and board members because we will be there right alongside you next time you do it.
Absolutely. We will definitely be doing it next year in the spring.
Terrific. Thank you so much. All right. Well, thank you. Next, we have our MOT, our Maintenance Operation and Transportation Team, and this entire year, I should say, year and a half. And this entire year, I should say, year and a half, has been, as I began the board meeting, has been quite exceptional. And in order for us to do everything that we do, we need a very strong backbone. And earlier this year, we recognized our student nutrition team for the work that they did in assuring that we served one and a half million meals to students in Melpitas, years 18 and younger. And now, as we come to a close, I would like to recognize our Maintenance Operation and Transportation Team for all the hours that they spent disinfecting, putting up signs, installing dividers on desks, making sure that every office, every classroom had hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer dispensers, that we had shields. Early on in the pandemic, I was at a restaurant and noticed that they made these shield dividers and sent a picture to our MOT team. And one of our journeymen figured out a way to build something similar, and they built 100 of these dividers for about the cost of $60 each. And the cheapest we had found online was 300. So it's doing imaginative, creative, things like that, that allowed us to be as safe as possible. And it's all thanks to our MOT team led by Mr. Brian Shreve, Milton Casada. And they are not with us any longer, but I do want to give credit to our Edgar and also to Mr. Mike Fisher for their work in helping the team. And all of our grounds, bus drivers, custodians, journeymen, technicians, all the work that they did. And I have to say, as you may imagine, buses weren't operating. That doesn't mean that the people who drive them weren't doing something really important. And those bus drivers were there at the school sites, helping alongside with everything that needed to be done to assure that we had all of our safety pieces in place, and then some. So I'd like to thank all of you for the dedication that you have to the learners in our district and for your commitment to making sure that we were all safe. And Mr. Scott Forstner put together, along with Mr. Flashner, a video tribute to you. So I'd like to play that right now.
Hi, I'm Brian Shreve, Director of Maintenance Operations and Transportation for the district. Been here 38 years. Hard to believe it's been that long. It's gone so fast. I couldn't be more privileged to be a part of this team who worked so diligently to provide a safe and comfortable environment for our students and staff.
I'm Marcos Sernellis. I'm the day custodian here at the district office. This is my third year here, and I'm also a Cal Hills graduate, class of 2014. So I get here at six in the morning. I'm the first one here. I unlock the campus, and I have a daily routine. I check all my restrooms and make sure there's no graffiti, no trash. I clear the walkways. Since the start of the pandemic, I've been checking my restrooms quite a bit more now. I check them every hour. I make sure every classroom is socially distanced. And for, when we have board meetings here, we make sure chairs are six feet apart. We sanitize, wipe down with Terminator. So here at the district office, I work with several departments, including adult education. We have a continuation high school. We have business services and human resources. And throughout the day, I have a radio, and if they need anything, they call me on the radio.
My name is Rona Tolentino. I'm the secretary of the Maintenance Operations and Transportation Department. I've been working here going on two and a half years. I serve as a central hub of Maintenance Operations and Transportation Department, supporting each supervisor and all the aspects of the job. I'm pretty much the, you know, I relay the message to everybody. So whatever comes out with the district, I'm always like that, the one that communicates that information. So whether it's writing it on the board behind me, putting out the papers, sending out the emails to the staff, that's pretty much what I do. So they know and they're informed. Every day, I look at our purchase requisitions and make sure they get filled out. We deal with invoices, making sure vendors get paid on time, and up to our accounting department.
My name is Adrian Perez, and I'm the grounds bus driver here for the district. I've been working for two years now and going on three in November. So yes, I've been seeing, we had a leak, a mainline leak. I repaired, then goes to all the valves. That's the main line that I need to get that fixed in order for the other lines to run. And I was repairing that leak, and I've noticed that we had an old irrigation valve, which I said, might as well, we have the hole open, let's replace that old valve. So I'm pretty much the guy that takes care of the irrigation, but when I'm not doing irrigation, I'm transporting kids to schools, being, as you said, bus driver, and other repairs as well, from patching asphalt to cutting trees, trimming, mowing, all the maintenance for landscape.
Hello, my name is Raúl Escareno. I am the dispatcher bus driver, and I've been working with the district since 2017. First thing in the morning, I have to check emails and maybe messages from parents that something might change on their kids not going to school, or, and that's the first thing I do. And after that, I check if all my drivers are going to be here. So if I'm going to need an extra driver, that we normally use the ground guys as drivers too, like backup for us. So that's what I have to do first thing in the morning. After that, I mean, I'll stay in my desk most of the times in case that drivers need assistance or parents call for questions like, where's the bus, the ETA to the bus, or things like that. That's pretty much my daily's here at the district.
So here, we've seen just a small snippet of representation from our incredible MOT personnel. There are so many more that keep our district up and running, along with bus drivers, HVAC, building maintenance, custodians, and more. 65, 70 personnel and up. I can't thank them enough for all that they do, which is the heartbeat of this district.
Thank you very much. And thank you to our fantastic MOT superstars. Mr. Shreve or Mr. Acosta. Would any of you like to say a few words?
Awesome, awesome video. Put it together very well. They, they, they make us look great. These employees are incredible. Day in, day out, pivoting, moving, changing, adapting. They're an awesome group of people. Thank you.
Are there any comments or things that the board would like to say to MOT? Well, while they're thinking about it, I'll start. I learned that today. The way that we know that we have a fantastic team is that we don't hear about it. All the, all the details, as far as before COVID, with the transportation, with the grounds and those types of things, were taken care of where board members, at least I didn't hear from the community, those types of things. So that, that tells you have a very smooth and well-run operation. And we're grateful to be able to recognize you tonight at the board meeting.
All right, I guess I'm next. Well, thank you MOT for all the hard work, for finding ways, setting up, and make sure that it is safe for all of us. And now we are going back in in-person. You made it possible. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you MOT for working extra hard, especially during COVID times. I know it's been a very challenging 18 months, but without you, you know, I know that it'd be very, very difficult for our district. So I just want to say thank you so much for your dedication and your hard work.
As I, I think your motto is really spot on. You're the heartbeat of the district. So really, thank you all MOT for what you do for the district.
And I'd also like to thank you. Being a, being a frontline worker is especially challenging during the pandemic. Thank you for your dedication and your courage, keeping things running.
All right. Thank you. That's your new tagline, MOT, the heartbeat of the district. All right, now I would like to do my biweekly COVID update. The Public Health Department has changed its data dashboard. So I no longer have a case rate to report. However, I did find that we have a seven-day average of 27 new cases here in Santa Clara County. What you will find, if you look on their dashboard, is they are very closely monitoring the number of county residents 12 years and up who are vaccinated. And their goal was to get to at least 80%. And we, as county residents, have hit that. So 80% have at least one dose of the vaccine, and 71.3% are fully vaccinated. And here in Melpitas Unified, where our Safety First team has been doing its due diligence, we have 70.1% of our employees with completed vaccines. So we pretty much mirror what you see there on the county. And this is the latest from our biweekly report that Eva Magaña has to submit to the Public Health Department. This gives you the breakdown of our employees. We have, of the 10,040, I think it is, who have, who work here, 708 have been fully vaccinated.
How many employees work?
10,040. That includes even the one-hour, people who have just one-hour position. It also includes the board members. So, I'm sorry, 1,040.
I was working to it. I was trying to get there. It was
10,000, almost 400 students, but 1,040 employees. I was wondering, why do you keep asking me?
I was like, wow.
Well, we do have that many learners plus.
Yes.
So we have five who received their first dose. And you see in the pie chart that the color there is represented by the descriptors. You get the idea. We still have a little over 250 who haven't responded. And as you'll see in the next slide here, on June 18th, Cal OSHA made some directives, some rulings, that matched the governor's June 15 ruling. And the reason why it's important for our employees to let us know if they've been vaccinated or not is because per Cal OSHA, those who do not work in school settings, so those who work in office settings, they will not need to wear a mask. And you see here at the dais, we are all fully vaccinated, so we are not wearing our mask. And that's because Cal OSHA on Friday ruled that we don't have to. It doesn't mean that if those people who have been vaccinated, if they are more comfortable wearing their masks, they certainly can do that. And as a matter of fact, as the employer, we still have to provide to any employee who requests it a mask for their, for them. The social distancing is no longer something that is required. Again, this is in office settings that I'm talking about, not classrooms, talking about the office settings. And surveillance testing is no longer required for those employees who have been fully vaccinated. Testing is required for those who may have contracted COVID. And also when there is a case for those who are near the case, they would need to be tested. And when we have an identified outbreak, which for their standards is 20-plus people, then we would have to make sure that everybody is following social distance protocols. So that's in regards to the offices. And as you may recall, we have MOUs, Memoirs of Understanding, with our two associations. And so with this change in the Cal OSHA ruling, we will be inviting classified employees to talk about the impacts of that in the MOU, which expires on June 30th. We are still awaiting school status, though. So we have, just to give you the lay of the land with the different entities, we have the governor. He made his directives on June 15th that applied to everybody outside of an employer and employees. Then we just recently had Cal OSHA that applies to all employers, both private and public. Now, as far as school settings go, that's under the California Public Health Department. So we're awaiting the California Public Health Department's ruling to see what happens. Today, in my superintendent's meeting with the county, Dr. Dewan shared with us that it looks like the California Public Health Department will most likely do away with the social distancing and probably will still require students under the age of 12 because they don't have vaccine, vaccine yet to wear masks. So that's what we're expecting to see with the California Public Health Department. And most likely, they'll have their ruling sometime in July. I want to point out the members of our Safety First team. And, you know, we do these recognitions all the time. And Mr. Forstner is a member of our Safety First team, so I couldn't tell him who I wanted for the recognition because I wanted it to be a surprise. So I told the whole Safety First team that I needed them here tonight while I do my COVID report because they had to share very important information. But really, it was my guise for us to recognize the hard work that each of these individuals has done for these last 15 months. Mr. Damon James, who's our Director of Human Resources Relations, Ms. Eva Magaña, who you met earlier this evening, Mr. Scott Forstner, our Board Support and Communication Specialist, and also Milton Casada. So if we could give each one of these people a huge round of applause for keeping us safe. And I want to remind us, we only had 21 employees who contracted COVID. And fortunately, every single one of them is healthy today. So one is still recovering, but he's healthy. So thank you for all of your communication that you put out. Thank you for the many hours that you've spent answering questions. Thank you for the surveys that you conducted, that you continue to do. Thank you for organizing the testing. Thank you for organizing vaccination clinics. Thank you for reaching out to parents to assure that they know what the protocols are. Thank you for keeping all of us updated. Thank you. Thank you. Do any of you have anything you'd like to say? Is that okay? Go ahead, Ms. Magania.
Okay, sorry. Um, that was really sneaky, so thank you. But you got us. But I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to serve in that capacity because I really feel like, you know, the relationships built over the last year have been priceless with all of our team members and particularly with the Safety First Team as well. And so they're an amazing team that I had the privilege to work with this last year. And I just really want to say thank you as well for that.
Mr. Casada or Mr. Forsner, would you like to say anything?
Sure. Thank you so much for the recognition. And I'd just like to say it's been my pleasure working on the Safety First Team. And it's been some of the most rewarding work in my professional career. So thank you so much.
I would like to say thank you as well. Thank you for, for all the work that we did together and we continue to do and, and have everybody as safe as possible with disinfecting protocol, protocols and, and the work that we have done. It's just been a pleasure working with this team. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And Director Damon James had a prayer commitment, so he couldn't be here unfortunately. So he missed the surprise. I'll catch him another time. Publicly, yes. And now I have one more, a very important recognition. There are people who we work with who sometimes we don't know their story. And this leader has been a leader since she was a young mother and was learning English. And she became a leader in her children's classroom. And teachers and principals recognized that and asked her to be a part of their parent leaders. And pretty soon they asked her to be a campus parent who was on the payroll. She went to adult school. She later went to college, got her bachelor's, got her master's. And all along the way, she continued to lift up people who didn't see in themselves what she saw. She made sure that every parent, every student, every teacher, every principal that she worked with, knew how important learning is. And that without the belief in possible somebody who could be Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Development may not be here. So I'd like to thank you, Norma, for your dedication to learning. And to, as you said, at the Calhills and Adult School Graduations. That one, we believe that we can. Or even if we think we can, but we're not sure. If we just take the step forward towards whatever that piece of paper might be, or to the door that's open, we can find some really magical things. And that's what education does. It provides magic for people. And you have done that. You have empowered so many people. And you through some of the emails you shared with me, I think you heard from them directly, how you made an impact in their lives. Before you came to us, you were at Alum Rock. And I don't think everybody knows that you were not just the Principal of the Year at Alum Rock and the state, but also National Principal of the Year. And it takes a special kind of person to to get to that level. And so I feel very honored that we had this time with you in this last part of your career. And leading Milpitas Unified to what's possible. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to present this to you. And that concludes the superintendent's report for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you Superintendent Jordan. Now we go on to the Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Report.
Yes, let's go ahead and start with Ms. Assistant Superintendent Rodriguez.
Wow, I the highlight is that I'm retiring. And and so the, the last couple of weeks since the last time we worked together, the LND Department has been really busy tying up the, the, the end of the year details. And the planning for next year. For me, I wanted to say to the community, to the teachers, to the principals, our parents and our board and our superintendent, I want to thank you for the opportunity to lead a long way alongside all of you. And to provide opportunities and pathways to all of our learners. It, it was very gratifying for me to see and to hear Ava Magania, who is leading the virtual pathways for K-12. Carissa Scott, who is opening our first middle college high school. The Dual Immersion Program, who is becoming an international multilingual pathways and so many more. The building, this building was going to be transformed into more pathways. Definitely Milpitas is leading the way and I am looking forward to continue to read and brag about the opportunity that I had to be here. And I was, I'm a Peta, it's an MLPUS and I was supporting Milpitas and serving Milpitas. There are so many wonderful things that happened. The pandemic proved to all of us that we are a cultural we. And, and there is, there is nothing that can stop us. And I still continue to believe in that. And and I am very, very again grateful for the opportunity and for everything that all of you contributed to my growth. I will take you all with me in my heart. And I am looking forward to writing the next chapter of, of my story. Hopefully I will publish it. I don't know when, but I will. Thank you. You will be a chapter in that, in that book. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Brunson.
Green light says it is. Now we are good. Good evening trustees, community of Milpitas. A couple of things. Want to congratulate Virginia Coleman, our HR analyst, who was nominated by Heather and Damon to be a CCA, CSCA Classified Member of the Year. Though she didn't win the award, we were there in spirit at the digital celebration. So thank you trustees Cheryl and and the rest of our HR team, Kay, Charlotte, Maria, Lena and Lori for your support. I thought it would be nice to give an update also this evening on the status of the employee hires that we've been making for this next year. And it's been a lot of work virtually, but our principals and department leads have done an outstanding job. We had, you know, thirteen retirees this year and eleven resignations. We've had to develop some new positions as well. And in doing that, to serve our students and the community, we've hired twenty-three elementary teachers at the secondary level. Mostly the Milpitas High School and Rancho, we've hired up to seventeen positions. And our middle college, we hired an English teacher and we've hired two SLPs. We have two new TOSs for the district. We'll be hiring five principals at the elementary level, three already, two principals, one's a co-principal and we'll have a new principal for Spangler. And then we'll have six new people assuming new positions within the district because they rise through the ranks, as you heard this evening. And people that are coming to the district. So it's been a blessing and a lot of work and creativity and outreach through social media as well as the major platform of Edjoin. But again, it comes down to our leaders who are really quick to get out there and look for these folks. And I'm proud that we had three contracted specialized teachers last year. We don't have any at this time because we went out so early and also hired some really capable people. We still have about five hires to make as things change. But we'll get there. And I'm just, I want to thank all of our leaders around the district for your work and your support, our Classified Association, as well as our Teachers Association for their support throughout this process because it is inclusive here in Milpitas when we bring people on board. And we'll be doing interviews again tomorrow for our Spangler principalship. So and then APs on Monday. And we'll hopefully get an executive director for Innovation and Learning this Friday. So things are moving really well. Thank you.
Jonathan, excuse me. So the, the attrition that you described or the transition for the new hires, it's about what percentage of the district employees total?
It looks like about forty-five-ish right now. So forty-five out of the certificated group, we have about five hundred and three. So the quick math on that would be less than ten percent. Yeah. Yeah, which is, which is very, it's good because I know like the last couple of years, we're at fifty and sixty certificated employees. So even with the pandemic, we've been able to maintain, I think, the level of support that we need. And you know, bless the hearts of all our staff, classified and managers are certificated because it was a year like no other. And yet they're still with us and we're going to take care of them because part of attracting people is also retaining them and recognizing them. And we try to do that, as you see, each and every board meeting, recognizing the people that do the great work here in Milpitas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Jordan. And I have two quick reports tonight. And my first one will be from our Facility Department. This summer, we, we will be super busy for, for our bond program. We have a few major projects that going on, like for example, both middle schools, they're going to have a new track in the field. And we're also working on the high school gym and theater design. And as well as we're building metals phase two now. And we'll, besides, besides those major projects, we're also working on some roofing, HVAC and the paving project at a different school site. And if you're interested, want to know more about our development and the bond program, I invite you to come to our coming bond oversight committee meeting on July seventh. My second report is from the Student Nutrition Department. We're continuing to provide a free meal pickup for anyone who is eighteen or under. They can feel free to stop by at Palm Roy side. We just added this new site along with the Calhills Campus and also the Rose CDC Campus. So feel free, stop by and to pick up a free meal. That ends my report for tonight.
Thank you. And speaking of meals, thanks to Mr. Robert Jung of MCE Milpitas Community Education Endowment. We are connected with Loes and Fishes and we'll be doing a special meal, hot meal delivery for, prepackaged meal delivery for students and their families at three locations in this coming year. And I would also like to invite Mr. Jung to do a short annual update on MCE work with the district.
Is it on? Okay, awesome. I'm sorry, getting a little old. Alright, on behalf of the Milpitas Community Education Endowment, I want to thank our superintendent and our board for the opportunity for, for this presentation. For folks who don't know who I am, my name is Robert Jung and I'm the founder of the Milpitas Community Education Endowment, also known as MCE. Alright, I'm going to wait for my slides to catch up. Next slide. Alright. So together as partners, as you may have realized over these last fifteen months, we have experienced COVID, we have experienced our AAPI hate, BLM, our police reform and various other challenges in our community. It is this culture of we and the strength of our community that provides the light at the end of the tunnel. MCE is proud to stand as a partner to Milpitas Unified School District. As one of our core beliefs is that we can strengthen our community through education. I want to thank all the teachers, the staff for their work in adapting and rising to the challenge of this past year. This online teaching, online learning has been all new to us. And yet we have overcome and adapted. Also to, kudos to the board and superintendent for their leadership in district and providing opportunities to our students this past year. Compared to many of our neighboring districts, our district has persevered and ensured that our students have the best possible learning opportunities. Next slide. So just like the district, MCE continues its efforts to support the district and the community. In the slide here are just some of the highlights that what we were able to accomplish this past year. We start out with just providing furniture through some local company moves to Spangler. We've granted our annual MUC grant to match to its PTS PTA. We continue to do our parent seminars over at the high school. We introduced our Milpitas Strong Art Contest, which actually we were surprised at the number of winners here in the district. Next slide. We continued our STEAM showcase, but this year we did it virtually. And we had over a hundred and thirty-five projects and virtually all of our schools participated. Everyone was able to receive a certificate from MCE and the district as well as Assemblyman Alex Lee. We did our Jackery donations. We did our magic final presentations with our partnership with GetMagic.org where we helped out seven middle school students to go on a STEM journey virtually through weekly mentoring. And we continue our tradition, providing the Danny Lau Memorial Scholarships. And we want to congratulate Caitlin Tan and Victor Ramos. This is our fifth year. And we hope to do it two more years. Next slide. And we want to congratulate Caitlin Tan and Victor Ramos. This is our fifth year, and we hope to do it two more years. Next slide. This summer, we continue to offer these programs and start in this Thursday, if you will join us at Mountain Mikes, we are doing our pizza fundraiser. We also intend on September eighteenth, we're working on putting together our Midon Festival community effort to educate the community on various of ours and educate on our various Asian cultures as well as celebrate the Midon Festival. And we are continuing working on our year-end fundraiser as well as we are going to, we were able to meet our target goal for 2020. So beginning July first, we are happy and proud to announce that we will be able to support another $5,000 grant to the school district. Next slide. And this is our last slide, which we want to thank you for the continued support and partnership to serve our future. And I will take any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the easiest presentation ever.
Thank you, Mr. Jung, for your your time and your long-term dedication to the Mopetis Unified School District. It is evident by your actions and your evolution with the MCE. Whereas where first where you first started and now you have, I'd probably say, a portfolio of of services that you have found that align with your mission and your vision in the Board of MCE, which it has a wide variety and it is beneficial to the MUSD students and families. So thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for all the support and for the partnership.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. All right.
I really appreciate the the virtual STEAM showcase and the magic final presentation. It really showed what we can do in this district with the students that we have, even in this virtual environment. So thank you for for leading that.
Absolutely. And we're we're willing to take any other suggestions. So if you have others who are willing to listen.
You barely touched on, you just labeled, you just shared the thing that you do under MCE. There are so many other things that you yourself do within the district, not under that responsibility of that organization that doesn't go unnoticed as well. So thank you again.
Actually, I do want to make a small clarification. Ms. Jordan, you indicated the the work with our district partnership with Loes and Fishes. I would like a clarification. I want to give credit where it's due. It is not, that particular program is not Mopetis Community Education Endowment. It is actually a new program, is a new organization called Hope for the Unhoused. And that particular organization is dedicated to supporting our homeless and homeless prevention for the city of Mopetis. So I do want to give credit to where it's due, and and we can't take that credit. Sorry.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Director Brian Shreve of MOT to give his update. Mr. Shreve.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan, school board members, Executive Cabinet. It gives us great pleasure to share just a brief department update from the management team here at MINT Operations and Transportation. So I'd like to share my screen. Scott, can I share it?
Yeah, go right ahead, Brian.
Thanks. How we look? Can you see that? Thank you. So as you know, these past fifteen months have been like no other, with department staff working on the front lines during a pandemic to support our students and staff. MOT has pivoted so many times, more than ever, with the constantly changing conditions that COVID has brought us. The staff here at MOT has done such an exemplary job of adapting to these changes and maximizing the safety of our students and staff. Just wanted to share some statistics. It helped provide some numbers to our operational footprint. We have eighteen locations encompassing over a million square feet of building space, and it's growing. There are two hundred and sixty-plus acres of land with a mix of landscape to keep up with. Our department has sixty-eight support personnel ranging from building maintenance, grounds, transportation, secretarial, and custodians. Our custodians have played such an important role of sanitizing and cleaning our sites. Even before summer started, bond construction projects were being done. And now with summer upon us, more have begun. MOT spends quite a bit of time working with the bond department and onsite, addressing so many unforeseen and additional questions that arise needing the department's expertise. Many of you have heard my statement, the builders are here today, gone tomorrow, and we, MUSD, live with it for eternity. Making sure it's right in the end is so vital. Here are the Spangler Portables project now underway. Here you can see the nearly completed Randall Elementary's new administration of multipurpose building. We are so excited seeing this almost ready to open. You can also see the heavy construction work for Phase Two of Mabel Meadows as well. I'm now going to pass it on to Jared Acosta, our new supervisor of transportation, grounds, vehicle maintenance, and safety.
Thank you, Brian. Our grounds crew has been very busy getting our landscape areas back in order. At one point during COVID, we had weeds in excess of five to six feet tall. A great bill of irrigation repair has taken place. With the drought upon us, we're adjusting times and adhering to local ordinance to ensure we do our part of reducing water consumption. The district has five sites with that run on reclaimed water, not impacting their restricted water use. Next slide. MOT personnel were able to prepare for middle schools to have in-person promotions along with Calaveras High School graduation this year. Now I'm going to pass it to Milton Quisada, our new supervisor of building maintenance.
Hello. Good evening. Our HVAC journeymen have worked tirelessly, ensuring acquitted air, acquitted outside air circulation, upgrading to MRF-13 filters, increasing our frequency on prevailing maintenance inspections to comply with air quality guidelines. Department personnel took on the designing and fabricating mobile dividers through for the use through classrooms for students and staff. We also took advantage of the students not being on campus to conduct repairs on playgrounds. As you know, this year and last year brought us many unexpected power interruptions. Our department adopted and adjusted to provide limited lighting and some small generators to affected sites. Our departments has set up an emergency response equipment to have ready and dispatched to affected sites. We also outfitted and tested a remote power source, which is the generator that you see in the picture, to run our entire Student Nutrition Central Kitchen operations on a standalone generated power. This allows us to continue to prepare and store meals without the risk of catastrophic loss or uncertainty. Now I'd like to pass it on to Brian Shreve.
Thanks, Milton. So lastly, we're very excited to bring you news of final approval of two additional all-electric school buses and their charging infrastructure. Of the $900,000 for the project, approximately $10,000 will be out of pocket for the district. This will bring the total of electric school buses to eight the district will have. We anticipate these buses to arrive in approximately six months. So with that, we'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share some of MOT with you. We'd be happy to entertain questions if there are any.
Any questions from the board? Again, we just want to continue to thank, you know, MOT team for your work. Thank you for in this presentation mentioning the the upgrade of the filters. That was always one of the questions that was always looming about what are we doing in that area and how are we moving forward with that. And also thank you for sharing the ingenuity about instead of how we were able to make things, instead of purchase things and significantly reduce the costs of those things on behalf of the school district. So thank you again, Mr. Shreve, and to the MOT team.
Thank you all.
Yep. Thank you, heartbeat of the district.
Thank you, Brian.
Now, I'd like to invite Principal Carl Stice to give his update for Calhills.
Good evening. Forward Superintendent Jordan, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Executive Cabinet and the Mopetis community, we are very excited to be here to give you a a few key updates on Calhills. We've engaged and updated the board, cabinet, and community on different issues throughout this year. But this is an opportunity for us to really share our outcomes from this prior year school year and also give you an overview of our plans for continuous improvement for next year. We will keep it brief, and then if you have any questions afterward, please feel free to ask those. Next slide. So first, I would like to update you on our attendance and engagement data. We have shared prior engagement data with the board and with the community, showing increasing levels of engagement throughout the 2021 school year. But I really wanted to give you an idea of some of the things that caused that increase to happen. So first, let's go back and just do a very quick three-year overview of attendance, overall attendance for Calhills. So 2018, 19, normal year, no pandemic. So we were averaging in-person eighty-seven to ninety percent attendance for all ten months, daily attendance. Then you're fast forward to 2019, 2020, where we had the interruption of the century in March. And we still maintain an average of about ninety-three to ninety-five percent for August to March, prior to distance learning. And then, I'm sorry, then we maintain a good level of attendance after that, but I do not have the exact date on that. As you know, attendance was taken differently at the end of last year. Fast forward to 2020 and 2021, we've averaged ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent for all ten months of the school year. Our averages also remain mostly consistent across our subgroups, so our ELO, our special ed, economically disadvantaged, et cetera. So what does this tell us? Well, it tells us a lot of different things. But one is that when we find ways to pivot and make it easier for students to show up, they do it. The second thing is that we made an aggressive pivot to teachers, counselor, admin, and classified directly contacting students and families. And that worked. So done are the days of parents receiving mostly automated messages regarding attendance. We have made a cultural shift at Calhills to reaching out directly through text message, of course, email, direct phone calls to parents, students, whoever we feel is going to help guide the student and get them to reengage in school. So that was a very, very important part of this that Mr. Payne, our counselor, is going to talk about in just a second. We also are looking at some creative ways that we're going to continue to leverage what we've learned during distance learning to benefit student engagement next year. And I'll have more about that in a little bit. So now I'd like to introduce Mr. Payne, our Calhills counselor. And he will handle the next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Stice. So the next slide, we have the 2021 graduation and end of the year outcomes. We have forty-five students graduate on time, four students potentially will graduate in the summer. We have four RSP students that will come back for a fifth year. And we helped six seniors find alternative placement. For example, the alternative placement is Soundsay Conservation Corps and Adult Education. Less than ten percent starting the year. In August, less than ten percent were on track to graduate. That means that they needed sixty or more credits to be able to graduate for their senior year. By March, fifty percent were on track to graduate on time, and we ended up having eighty-five percent graduated on time. The rest will graduate in the summer, fifth year, or through adult education. So what made the difference? The difference was basically a collaborative effort between teachers, counselor, classified, and administration to maintain relationships. Relationships are very important in education. So examples of that were hundreds of phone calls, collaborating with families through Zoom, being able to meet with them after and beyond the school day. Some parents did not get off work until five, six, seven o'clock. We were able to meet with them at that time and go over progress with students. The in-person learning days were offered to a majority of students. We had strength in our IOT leadership and planning partnership with PSI. We have virtual and in-person meetings with students, parents, and guardians to discuss progress, as I mentioned before. Some of those meetings were after the normal day, but we wanted to be able to accommodate. We had thousands of text messages to motivate and encourage students. For example, a student might text at 10:00 PM. I wanted to make a point to be able to respond and get back to the student because what I found last year versus this year is that if you wait till the next day, sometimes their motivation is not there. At that point, they they're on to something else. So we found great success by being able to get back to students right when they're motivated. They were able to, either if there's a question that needed to be answered, or if they needed to be able to have assignment on Odysseyware unlocked, we were able to do that. We also had a shift in credit recovery regular program. We had one crop class, first, second, and third quarter. Our fourth quarter, we added three more to the master schedule, so we have four crop classes. We were able to do that through our CSI funds, and we saw tremendous success by being able to give students other outlets to be able to get to credits. In our four crop classes, eighty-five percent of the students were able to receive at least two or three credits in that class. Majority of them received five to ten credits. So we saw tremendous success from being able to add additional three crop classes. Now, our adult education credit recovery program this year was tremendous. We were able to push a lot of students through. We had a full roster throughout the whole year of seniors that needed credits, and they were able to get credits. And we were also able to move the needle from the ten percent that we started in August to be able to get to that eighty-five percent in June. In addition, we had opportunities that we started this year, the ACE Mentor Program. We also had Lions Club that we started last year that we were able to carry over this year. And we also had the Fly Program that we started fourth quarter, and we were able to maintain that. And we've had that for like the last, I think, five or six years at Calhills. The biggest thing is we wanted to preach to students is to never give up. You know, sometimes students can get discouraged when they look and say, I have a hundred credits, I have ninety credits. We had a student this year had a hundred and thirty-nine credits. I had a conversation with him the beginning of the year, and I had three or four conversations with him throughout the year with his dad and himself. He was able to graduate in June on time. So, you know, just getting them to believe in themselves and to never give up, they can see it through. Next, I want to pass it back to Mr. Stice, and he could present the next slide.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Payne. So I want to verify if we have Ms. Maria Vargas in the meeting. Do you happen to know Scott if she was able to log in? She did say she may have to work late, so it looks like that may have been what happened. So Ms. Vargas was going to share that her son was assisted tremendously along the path that he had. He has been a Calhills student for more than two years and had not been making progress. And we were continually meeting with the student, the parent, to try to help with that, motivate him. He loved to do sports. And the student, long story short, we found that the best placement for him was in the Adult Ed program toward the end of this year for him to be able to finish by June. And so we worked with Ms. Brahim to get the student over to Adult Ed in shape and and able and academically ready to pursue that and to graduate on time. And she was just, you know, tremendously happy, as was her student, that even though he was not able to finish with us at Calhills, he took advantage of the partnership with the Adult Education Program. So that was in a nutshell what she was going to share. Next slide. So I wanted to give the board a quick rundown of what our priorities are for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And these are by no means exhaustive. But I think I hit or re-hit some of the top ones right here that are in our school plan. So number one is regular social emotional learning check-ins and activities of advisory. In fact, we are working closely with Sandra Cantona and Dr. Rebecca Cole to be able to pilot some S E L activities and programs with students next year with the mental health group and our mental health counselor on campus. We understand that students have had a very challenging year and a half, and there are going to be S E L needs next year, and we need to be ready for those as they continue to to show up at school. The second area of focus is going to be the establishment of a parent, teacher, student association. We started to get that off the ground, and then unfortunately, the pandemic hit. And so we still have a very motivated community member and prior parent of a student, or she's still a parent, parent of a prior student. And we will get that off off the ground next year. And running, there are a lot of different processes that you have to go through to have an official P G S A. We've always had a school side council, but now we're going to really elevate and and broaden our opportunities by bringing on a P G S A. Thirdly, the completion of our A to G U C, University of California, and Cal State University approval of courses process. That is very, very important to ensure that our students do not have any pathway that is limited to them. If they choose to apply to a four-year university out of Calhills in the future, they will be able to do so. Fourth is the implementation of our interim assessments to really measure our academic growth data. We have had other interim assessments in the past, and now we're going with the official I A Bs through the S back. Fifth, we're going to deepen the mentorship, our Out to Lunch program, and provide guidance and training and really expand the impact of that program. And I really look forward to the ability to to deepen the impact of that program. Six, the introduction of the Naviance platform for college and career readiness. It's going to be worth elective credits. And it will be run through advisory program, which involves every teacher and every student. And we're going to have competency, skill, assessments, career exploration, and greater student participation and goal setting. And then the seventh thing is greater opportunities for student leaders to have a stronger voice in the instructional and curricular programs. And so those are the updates that I wanted to provide for the board.
Thank you, Principal Stice and Mr. I see a common themes there of relationship, opportunity, accountability, and readiness to respond. Thank you.
All guided by data.
All guided by data. Yep.
Thank you.
Principal Stice and Mr. Payne, I really appreciate that last bullet point on one of the slides that says, never give up. Your team does amazing work. This past graduation, one of the student speakers speeches really stuck with me, and it was just amazing to see that one-eighty turn to, you know, something that he was struggling with to now he has a purpose moving forward and being able to graduate. And that really is just a reflection of the passion each of you really puts forth with your students. So thank you.
Carl, you continue to grow, to recognize data, provide to us a presentation historically, you know, being mindful of where you see change needs to be happening and then executing it real time, projecting forward, and then using that information for the upcoming year in terms of how to improve and and really and really allow Calhills students to feel like Calhills is its own unique experience. It's not the other school. It's not a lesser school. It's a alternative school to the high school that provides a different journey, the pathways, because life happens in different ways for all kids. So that definitely stood out as an under theme or undercurrent in your presentation, although you may not have spoken about it directly, but it is definitely evident. And thank you also, Mr. Payne, for continuing to to grow in your leadership and your voice within the district for Calhills as well as Milpitas High School, where it is it is being recognized and being heard very well. So again, I appreciate you both for your efforts and your energy.
Thank you. And I did want to thank of course the board and Superintendent Jordan for the support and also Norma Rodriguez for being a tremendous support to Calhills and our especially with our partnership with Partners in School Innovation.
Welcome. And thank you Superintendent Jordan. That does include the reports. Item fourteen, board group agreements. The board group agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. We will concede the time for these items. We'll move on to item fifteen, board communication requests. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School board members may request the placement of items on a future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. Our student board members' reports are on school and school district activities, but they will not be with us. So that means the board members need to be ready to go right away, and we will start with board member. No.
Well, thank you, poor President Norwood. Just to start off, Superintendent Jordan, I have a request to agendaize in a future board meeting, exploring the opportunities for our high school, middle college naming rights. Without conceding my time.
Thank you.
What member sigh?
I'll keep it brief and just list a couple of activities. I went to the Santa Clara County board meeting for the Rancho, watched the Rancho recognition. Again, congratulations Rancho and S C C S B A meeting, and I'll see my time.
Thank you. We're clerk.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Vice President Kelly Upchuck.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for joining us for our last school board meeting of the school year. I have a very brief report. I attended the M U S D Leadership Dinner, the school board Zoom meeting, and the road meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Yip Chuan. I'd like to utilize my time and make a request of the superintendent to ensure that as new milestones are reached in the district over the next several years, as long as you are superintendent, that we ensure that we invite Norma Rodriguez to the events and the opportunities that happen because she was here during the season where a lot of it, and she put in her time and participated in a lot of it. So to ensure that we stay in touch with her, and she can say no as often as she wants, but we we know that we've reached out to her to let her know that this is a very special. You're a part of a very special district at a very special time, and we want to make sure that you get a chance to see the product of the the work that you've done within the Unified School District.
Our ribbon cutting for our world languages school, Randall.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any public comments? As we move on to item sixteen, reports.
We did have a community member submit a written public comment for the sixteen A. The schooling services coordinator update. Did you want me to read that now or?
Yeah.
Okay, we get to.
Also, the checkup policy on written public comments or comments being submitted via statement in advance. I'm not sure of the policy on that.
Okay, this written comment is from Jackie Romero. Says, good evening, M U S D Board of Trustees and Superintendent Gerald Jordan. In the last three years, in the spirit of the culture of we, the Milpitas Parent Coalition Advocates have brought many concerns to M U S D admins into the M U S D Board of Trustees. During the pandemic, our focus expanded, and we created two community groups to focus on homeless solutions in Milpitas. One is now a nonprofit organization known as Hope for the Unhoused, founded by M P C advocate Lisa Moreno and other community leaders, past and present. While I was volunteering for Hope for the Unhoused, I was inspired by Mr. Robert Jung to advocate for our McKinney Vento families and students. I personally chose to pivot and created another focus group known as Milpitas Family First. Our main focus is to advocate for our McKinney Vento students. We are here tonight to express our gratitude for Nicole Stewart and her team for all the work they do to help our McKinney Vento families. There have been times when called Nicole and Norma last minute because we had extra food trays that were available through Hope for the Unhoused team, and Nicole and Norma stepped up last minute to connect our McKinney Vento families with the resources. And at times picking up the food trays and personally delivering the food trays to the families. We are grateful M U S D has created the space for Nicole to help our McKinney Vento families and students. We will never know all the sacrifices made by Nicole and her team to provide assistance to our McKinney Vento families. Nicole, I hope you know we appreciate you and your team. Thank you for all you do. Milpitas family advocates are extremely concerned about the effects of eviction moratorium being lifted. We believe we will have an increase of McKinney Vento families. Currently, the lawmakers are figuring out the details of extending the moratorium, but it's still unknown what the details are. We believe prevention is important, and we are here today to ask M U S D to be proactive and set aside resources to assist Nicole Stewart and her team to be able to assist our present and future McKinney Vento students. There's one more graph. Okay. Milpitas Family First Advocates are committed to continue our work at the local level through the district, city, county, and state level to help M U S D McKinney Vento families. We want to assure you that we are here to serve. If you have any recommendation on how we can help M U S D achieve the goals to support our McKinney Vento families and students, we are open to meet with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I see a hand raised. Let me get over. Yes, we have William Lamb. William, you're going to activate your audio. Take yourself off mute, and you'll have two minutes to speak. Go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. As a member of our community, we are grateful that we are healthy and safe during this difficult period. There are families and children. We are families and children who are going through hard times, and we just went to want to put a little smile on their faces, although the donation we make may not make huge difference in their life, but some of our groups, members, and their families spend a good deal of times to design and draw some nice artwork on each individual package. So we hope the kids will feel issue special when they receive them. Hopefully, the normal days that we took for granted in the past will be back soon. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Are there any comments or raise or any comments from the public on this item?
There are no more hands raised at this time. No more hands raised at this time.
Awesome. Okay, well, report sixteen A schooling services coordinator update.
Ms. Nicole Stewart, our schooling services coordinator, is going to provide an annual update.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan, and I'm going to go ahead and share my slides. But before I get started, I do want to say thank you to those who shared comments. I appreciate the support. And it's my pleasure tonight to share with you some of the work that I've been doing this this year. And when I say I, there's an asterisk there because this work certainly was not alone. And I have a lot of folks to thank, and I will be sharing with them, sharing their thanks throughout my presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So my title, actually, I'll introduce myself. My name is Nicole Stewart. I'm the schooling services coordinator for Milpitas Unified School District. And schooling service coordinator is, as I always say, a fancy title for social worker. It's my job. I always explain to the young people and to the parents that it's, you know, it's the job of the educators, the teachers, the principals, the assistant principals, to make sure students get educated and they graduate. And it's my job to see if there are any barriers to that education. And then I work with our community groups, with parents, and with the schools to remove those barriers so students can focus on their learning and be successful. So it's a really beautiful partnership, and I'm thrilled to be working with the students and staff and parents in Milpitas. Majority of the work that I oversee is the McKinney Vento supports for our students. And for people who don't know, McKinney Vento is actually a federal law that provides stability and ensures access to free and adequate public education for all children, regardless of their housing status. What we know is that students who are unstably housed tend to miss school, and their grades may suffer because they might miss school. And some of them missing school, the reason for that is that these families don't know that there's support. So many families are worried that if they share with us their housing instability, because a lot of our attendance area things and enrollment are based on where you live. Parents and students are afraid they're going to get kicked out. So it's really a wonderful program that allows students to stay in their home school, regardless of their their instability with housing so that they can kind of maintain that relationship with their teachers, with their classmates, and they have a safe place also to be fed every day and to learn. So the general definition for a student who qualifies for McKinney Vento is that they lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. Fixed literally means it's stable. It's not on wheels. Regular means it's they're in the same place every night, so they're not moving every few weeks. And then adequate means adequate. If there is mold or any kind of infestation And then adequate means adequate. If there is mold or any kind of infestation of rodents or animals, if there are leaks or, you know, whether it's gas or water, that is not an adequate residence for students. And I'm gonna share in a few slides kind of where our students are. But the main goal of the McKinney Vento program is to identify these, these students. Make sure that they get enrolled in school regardless of their ability to produce the documents that we usually use for school enrollment. And some of that is just because when someone is experiencing instability with housing, chances are a lot of their documents, like birth certificates and you know, school documents may be in storage or maybe somewhere where they can't access. They may also not have a PG&E or electric bill or a lease to share with the office. So the McKinney Vento program allows families to still register their students for school without having those documents. And then it's my job to kind of follow up and see that we can get access to those documents. We immediately, once we find and identify student and make sure they're enrolled in school, we provide food. They immediately get access to free lunch. And I do want to thank and give a shout out to Sandy and her wonderful crew in the Student Nutrition Services. This year, they are, have been my heroes. They have provided food for countless, countless students and families in this, in this community. And they've also really reached out to my McKinney Vento families, including calling every single family to make sure they knew exactly where to pick up food. And then they provided the documentation to me to let me know which families they couldn't get a hold of and which family said they actually were in a stable living situation and didn't maybe need that support. So I was able to follow up on that data. So thank you, Student Nutrition Services. You are all amazing. Then the next part of this job is really to refer the parents to any resources in the community, in the county, even in the state and federal resources that can help them become more stably housed. The demographics for our McKinney Vento students, the number is four oh six. And I know that kind of seems like a very high number, but remembering that a lot of these are families. I count individual students. So when we talk about families in the McKinney Vento program, it's about like two hundred eighty some, which is still too many, but I just wanna make, make sure folks are understanding the numbers. When we look at the ethnicity breakdown, fifty seven percent of those we serve are Hispanic. And then if you look into the, the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the breakdown of the other, of the ethnic groups. And I think that, yeah, and the key is right there. I broke down gender and language proficiency as well as the education program. So about twenty percent of our McKinney Vento students are in special ed. That is a wonderful way for me to coordinate and collaborate with our special education teachers, our paras and our department leads to make sure that those students are getting access and transportation to this, if, if that's a support they need. When it comes to languages, there is a diversity. So I have relied on our liaisons this year quite a bit to help support our students who are Spanish, our families and students who are Spanish speaking as well as Vietnamese speaking. I also want to thank the city of Milpitas for also providing some translation support when reaching out to families in need. And then there were, this is also the breakdown I provided for you of grade levels. So about majority of our McKinney Vento students are identified at the high school level, simply because the high school is the largest school in our district. But a majority of our McKinney Vento kiddos are, are elementary. And then I have the breakdown for you of how, about how many students at, at each school. And this snapshot was taken, I always remind folks, this data is moving. It's constant influx. Some parents, you know, students may move out of the district and they pull out of the numbers and then I'll get an intake from an incoming family. And, you know, maybe four students leave and six students come. So this number is always moving, but this are the, you know, most recent projections. This is the breakdown of the, of the housing situation of our McKinney Vento families. Majority of them are doubled up, which means they have a roof over their head, which is wonderful. But what it means is there are too many bodies in the space where they are. Certainly, it's not our purview of whether or not they are there legally. Certainly want it to be safe. But if there are multiple families in one home sharing that space, those students will qualify under McKinney Vento. And a majority of our students are in a doubled up situation. We have this year, especially actually toward the end of this year, had families in cars again and families in motels. Currently, as of this moment, right now, we have three families that are in hotels. And we, those are families that we are able to get out of their cars as soon as we find out that that's the case. And I need to share with you how subtle these kinds of conversations are. So myself and one of the principals were working to get a student a hotspot. And once I secured the hotspot from Technology Services, another shout out to our tech services folks who have been wonderful this year. Once I secured the hotspot, I contacted the mom to ask where I could drop it off. And she was a little evasive about where to drop it off, but I didn't mind that. That's kind of usual. People don't necessarily want a home visit, especially during a pandemic. But then I asked, you know, she was kind of trying to figure out when we could pick it up. And something in that exchange made me think that there wasn't anywhere for me to drop off the hotspot. So I very gently asked her if, you know, very gently asked her about her living situation. And she explained to me that they had found mold in the house that she was living in and she and her son had gotten very sick from it. So and the landlord wasn't letting them out of their lease. They were still paying quite a bit of rent, which was costing all of their, taking all of their money. So what this mom and her son, elementary level son were doing was driving in their car at night to stay awake and to not have to park anywhere and then finding a safe space during the day for the student to log into his classes. Which again, his attendance probably wasn't that great because it's hard to get wifi when you're traveling around. This had only been happening for about a week, but we immediately, within twenty-four hours, actually I would say within eight hours, were able to get that family into a hotel and to help them secure some housing. And I'm thrilled to let you know that that particular family is now in a permanent apartment, getting support from our county housing department. And that process wouldn't have been possible without the partnership with our assistant principals, our teachers for hearing the need of the students and raising their hand to say, I haven't seen this student in a while. Can you check on them? This was also our liaisons reaching out to the family to make sure they connected with me. I was able to connect with the Silicon Valley Independent Living Center, SVILC, which is providing our rent relief program in the moment. They immediately contacted the city of Milpitas, which then approved the housing department, which then approved the hotel stay for this family. And we were able to get this mom food and in a hotel safely within, I'd say about six hours, six to eight hours of finding out her predicament. That student was able to pull into classes, but it's been a choppy year for him. So he's excited to come back next year. But this is kind of the work that we do, right? When, when housing becomes an issue for our students engagement, we have to go directly to the source and support them. So I do want to help, do you want to specifically thank the city of Milpitas Housing Department and SVILC this year for their support. We have provided to date a little bit over a hundred thirty thousand dollars in rent relief to Milpitas families serving about seventy students. That means we're keeping them in their homes so they can stay here in Milpitas and stay in their schools, connected to their teachers and their peers, and they can thrive. And then from there, we can support further. And I also want to thank the principals, the assistant principals, the teachers who reached out to me and and said, you know, I think this family is having a challenge. Can you please reach out to them? So thank you all for this true culture of we this year. One of the pieces, parts of my job is that my job is funded also partially through the county Behavioral Health Services Department. And that's the schooling services piece. And through them, I have to provide data quarterly. And, and then they kind of share it back with me in, in aggregate. So this year I conducted about fifty-seven home visits to students who were stuck at home. We weren't really hearing anything from them. They weren't attending classes and teachers became worried about them. So with the help and support of our administrators at Cal Hills, at MHS and at other schools, myself and Carissa Scott had a list of students that were disengaged and we reached out to them. Many of them were safe and home, just really hard to connect with, with this online learning situation. So we were able to pull some students back in, especially once we started the in-person learning supports on our campuses. Some of our students were really just waiting to be in person. So I'm, I'm really thrilled that we get to do this next year in, with, with each other in the same space. A lot of the referrals I did were also were for family support. And a majority of those families that I supported this year were Hispanic families. And when I say Hispanic, also Spanish speaking majority. So again, very, a big thank you to our Latina liaisons and other community supporters who helped me with translation. And then some of the other referrals, just so you have a sense of the work that I, or the need in our community, really. Sometimes it was a behavioral or mental health referral. A lot of food support referrals this year. Certainly, we, we fed folks through our student nutrition services, but we wanted to keep their refrigerators full as well. So we have our community members to thank for that, as well as some of our city, county and, and federal supports. Providing support to Medi-Cal if families needed that. And then really supporting our students with their mental health. This year, I'll, I'll share that this in another slide. So I'm very deeply connected with our county supports and able to make referrals directly for our families and our students in need. Community support and engagement has been phenomenal this year, again, even in a pandemic. And I want to echo Superintendent Jordan's exclamation that we made it. And we truly only made it this year because we worked as a, as a really solid, tight-knit community. So again, huge thank you to those folks who are listed here. This year I had the pleasure of really getting quite a bit of support with our McKinney Vento families. It started with a conversation with students in the Travel and Tourism Academy who invited me to speak to their class at the end of last year, actually, right before the pandemic in February. And they decided they were gonna make self-care bags for our McKinney Vento students. So that picture on the bottom of the screen was the day that we stuffed all the, the self-care bags. So I'm very, very thankful for all those students who showed up and really, they were very thoughtful in what they provided for the self-care bags to our students. So thank you to all the travel and tourism students. But we also received donations. I think Mr. Lamb spoke to the donations of supplies in bags that were decorated by art students. And that's the picture on the far left. Those bags are in the Student Wellness Center or in my office, and those will be shared with our students at the very beginning of school. And I'm so thrilled. The artwork on those is absolutely fabulous. And then we also received over ten thousand donations from Milpitas staff. Are some people during the holidays really collected some funding and provided it for us to be able to provide support to our families. A lot of that came in the form of gift cards to Target, Walmart or Safeway for our families. The Milpitas Family Help Net is also a group that has been wonderfully supportive of me this year. It's a group of pastors in the city that have come together to gather donations for our students. And we, they have helped with over eleven thousand donations. And they really are the safety net because they've provided support, financial support for some of the things that other organizations will not fund. We've been able to pay PG&E bills for, for families. We've been able to buy bikes, donate furniture. We've even supported some of our families with dental needs that were beyond what insurance or anybody else would provide for them. And that allowed these students, you know, once their mouths were, once they were out of pain, to be able to engage. And I'm actually thrilled to tell you that two of those young women graduated this year against all odds. And I don't doubt that some of that is from the help of the Milpitas Family Help Net. Hope for the unhoused and voices of Milpitas, as well as the Milpitas Families First groups have reached out to me and provided different donations that have really supported our families. So I really just want to thank you so much. And MCE as well, they donate almost over fifty thousand dollars worth of charging stations for our families who are mobile. So the families that go into the hotels, the families that are in their RVs or cars, we provided those charging stations so that those kids could charge their laptops for school. So those donations have been very powerful this year for our students. And then finally, one of the most, one of my favorite parts of my job, the family and student engagement piece, really sharing tips and tools and understanding with our students and our, and our parents. This year we made some calm jars, the glitter jars with students and parents. I also shared around stress relief and self-care to both our ELAC groups, parent groups and MCE. And then did some other presentations for parents and for our students. And next year I'm looking very forward to doing those presentations more in person. So I do want to provide my contact information and I'm providing my email and my phone number here also because I want to share with the public. I know there's not a lot of folks in attendance tonight, but maybe some folks are watching live or will watch this recorded in a little while. We do still have rent relief funds. Some of those funds need to be expended by June thirtieth. So I do want to encourage anyone out there who knows someone who is behind on rent due to COVID or due to any part of this pandemic. Maybe they've lost their job or their wages have been cut back or, you know, the time at work's been cut back. We can provide some support around rent relief. And there is a pot of money that we, we need to utilize before the end of June. So please contact me directly. The subject can be rent relief and we'll make sure that you get the support you need. I want to stop sharing and I'm open for any questions that the board or the public may have.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, for your work, your, your commitment and your detailed presentation. I'd open up the questions or comments, feedback from the board.
Ms. Stewart, thank you for the data on your slides. I, I know as, you know, I engage with the community. A lot of questions come in as, you know, who are McKinney Vento students? How many we have in the district and so forth? So I really thank you for a thorough presentation with the data and the engagement with the multiple groups. Because a lot of them want to be very proactive and, and supporting these students. And so I keep directing them to you and I, and, you know, it sounds like it, it's working from a partnership perspective.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation and your work. I know certainly during this pandemic, it's, it's really just hit a lot of families so hard with lockdowns and layoffs and, and, you know, like homeless students, they have so much to worry about even before the pandemic. So with this crisis happening, it's just been a double whammy. So I'm just glad that, you know, we're, we're stepping up and doing what we can to help fill those needs. Because there, there is just a lot of unmet need out there.
Thank you.
I know that Daniel Cow, who was one of the managers of the schooling services with the Behavior Health Services in the county and is now working for Otto Lee, he is present as a presenter as well. And he was going to share a little bit about his work with you at the county.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Cheryl Jordan and everyone in attendance. My name is Daniel Cow and I'm the Healthcare and Social Services Policy Aid for Santa Clara County Supervisor Otto Lee. Prior to, prior to working with Supervisor Otto Lee, I spent three years as part of the Schooling Services Management Team with the Santa Clara County Behavioral Health Services Department. During my time with schooling services, I met Nicole Stewart and quickly learned how valuable she is to the Milpitas community, the schooling services program, the Milpitas Unified School District and all the children and families she serves. Nicole is an active contributor during schooling services by monthly meetings and data and evaluation and workgroup meetings. She's big on quality improvement and making data-driven decisions. As a matter of fact, the schooling services management team and I often leaned on Nicole to provide feedback to improve data collection and reporting for the program. She's a strong advocate for the Milpitas community, particularly for McKinney Vento children and children who have been through a lot of trauma. Without a doubt, the schooling services data and stories highlighting her work prove that Nicole has been effective in her role and schooling services is a better program because of her. I'm excited and honored to be here tonight to recognize her hard work and dedication to the essential elements of schooling services, which includes service coordination, family engagement, the campus collaborative and going out of her way to literally do everything she can to serve the needs of the Milpitas community. The Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors would like to present a certificate of commendation to Nicole Stewart in recognition of her exceptional service as a schooling services coordinator and unwavering commitment to making a positive impact for children and families in Santa Clara County. Congratulations, Nicole. This recognition is long overdue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very humble for that. Thank you very much.
So thank you for the, that presentation. Daniel of that award, long overdue. And I'd just like you to know that that type of flattery is not going to get her to leave us to work with you and your team over at the county. So tell all the supervisors, hands off, just, just, just so that you know that. And on, on that same note, there are a couple items that I have from the feedback that Nicole shared in her presentation. Nicole, if she can bring up back her deck right quick, that would be helpful. If you go back, you had mentioned, go back to your data slide where you showed the numbers right there. You said four hundred and six McKinney Vento students who we serve. And then during your presentation, you had mentioned ninety-four percent of our McKinney Vento students are doubled up. And then during your presentation, you had mentioned 94% of our McKinney Vento students are doubled up. That means they have stable housing. That means out of that 406 McKinney Vento students, 90%. What was the number? Was it 90%? You gave a number on another slide about how many were doubled up. Right, 94% were doubled up. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Is that, is that the way to interpret that information?
Yeah.
And then also 20% of your students, oh, the McKinney Vento students who are in special education. How is that coordinated? How, how was that coordination conducted within the district? Between the work that you do and our special education department?
Yeah, so most of the students, thank you for the question. And thank you again, Daniel, for that wonderful commendation. I asked Daniel if he was going to speak and he said he was just spectating. So he tricked me and thank you. I appreciate that. And no, I'm not leaving Milpitas. We've got some work to do. But to answer your question, Trustee Norwood. This, so our students are identified as McKinney Vento usually upon enrollment when there may be a challenge in producing a lease or a PG and E bill for the enrollment process. Some of those kids have already been identified as special ed and have an IEP with them when they come. And are kind of co- ident, I guess, co-identified. And some of those students are in special ed in our district and then it experienced housing instability. So that kind of, it's just a data point, but and the way that we work together is that, you know, often the special ed teachers or paras work very closely with the students and families and know their situation and also know if something is happening with the student that might be outside of the, the classroom. So they are often the ones who let me know that a, a student or a family is experiencing homelessness or housing instability and they have an IEP. So that's often how, how that works.
Thank you. The other item is I'd like to make a request of the superintendent. And working with you is that there are possibility of a targeted parent square regarding the rent relief. That could happen based on where you, you've identified the students. It appears that 50% of them were at the high school, or that's the largest number. Or there's some, possibly some sort of communication that could happen. Again, because we do want to see if we can get those funds utilized. So I'd like to ask the superintendent to work with you to ensure that we can kind of get some information out on that besides what you've done tonight. Because if people are struggling with homelessness, but they do know the communication through Parent Square, which they keep active, they may not get a chance to see this video or to see a recording of this. And any other means that we can let, let the, the highest need population know about that. We should be, hopefully we can get that done during the summer.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I've, I've been communicating on Parent Square to our McKinney Vento families specifically. Our, again, our wonderful tech department helped me create a list for that in Parent Square. But I also, you know, a lot of our families, because it's summer and maybe they're moving a little bit more this summer. Or a family might be in a situation right now where they know they can't pay rent for, you know, for July. So if anybody who's hearing this knows anybody, please put it out on your, your, on your channels. But I know, and Scott's always wonderful about putting it out through the Milpitas social media. So I have seen a post recently on the Instagram. And we can just continue to put some out. And I'm also going to go through tomorrow, actually, and call some of my families that I know tend to have a need or the ones that we've already served last year because we can also serve them again. So. But yes, please, any way you can spread the word, we want to support our families. And we hope that we'll get some more money into next year to be able to provide that same service. And I do want to be clear, this is not school district funding. This is funding from the city, the county, and the feds that I just get to tap into for our families.
Thank you. And my final ask of the superintendent is that when we convene actually at our first board meeting to recognize these organizations that Mc- that Nicole has mentioned that has supported the organization this year because we know our community partners are highly valued. And we, we want them to know that we appreciate their efforts, although a lot of them have, we do the work behind the scenes. But to let them know that we see them and we appreciate them and what they offer, because all of this is, you know, life-saving work. So, and then also just understanding, well, I'll just yield the time for this topic. Because I, I know it is very exciting, but let's make sure that we keep the conversation going because there is a possibility that the numbers could increase. As we go into the 21, 22 school year, let's make sure that we have a communication so that the resources that you need will be available. Item 17, action items. 17A, Business Services, adopt the district's 2021, 22 proposed budget, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight we're officially asked the board and to adopt our 21, 22 budget. We did a budget study on the June 8th board meeting. And tonight in the agenda, we have attached four items. Let me quickly share my screen here. So in our attachment, you will see we have the current year income statement. So we have, this is the current year estimated actual income statement of all funds. And we also have the 21, 22 adoption income statement for all funds along with our multi-year projections for the subsequent two years. As well as the SACS is the standardized account of code structure form. So those are the forms from the state. And ever since the last budget study, we have not made any changes to our adoption budget projection. So we're asking the board to officially adopt it tonight.
Okay, thank you. It's got, I see, is William Lamb's hand up because he didn't turn it off from before, or he has another question?
Let's find out. William Lamb, I see that you have your hand raised for a public comment. We have moved on to the action items and you had spoken on the previous item. Comment per individual, per item. So if your comment is on the proposed budget, please go right ahead. We've enabled your audio.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was wasting my hand because I, I left out a, just a little bit, a little things on my comment. I was representing the voice of Milpitas tonight. Yeah, that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you, William.
Thank you. And as Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zanger stated, we've had the board study session and no information has changed since that time. So do we have a motion?
Move to adopt the district's 2021, 22 proposed budget.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard it in stereo, so my question was, did it? Okay, the second was by Board Clerk Conley. And we have a motion in the second. This is a roll call vote. Vice President Yip Trong?
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann?
Yes.
Board Member Si?
Yes.
Board Member Neil?
Yes.
Board Member Norwood, yes. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
17, item 17A, to conduct a public hearing on the district's general fund excess reserves.
Yes, this is also part of the budget adoption process. We do this every year. And this is regards the Senate Bill SB 858 that requires the school district starting from the fiscal year 15, 16, and beyond to to show the access, general fund a minimum reserve. Let me share. This is, let me open, we have a spreadsheet. To list it, besides the general fund minimum requirement of the 3% of reserve. We also have a reserve in our strategic fund 17. Scott, can you open that document somehow?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna tell you if you need some documents open, just let me know.
Okay.
So.
So I can quickly walk through that worksheet quickly.
You have to unshare.
Okay.
Now, there you go.
Okay, perfect. So this is the worksheet that we will need to use as a part of this resolution and the first one is listed, the general fund, the, the reserve is 4.5 million. And that is pretty much covering our 3% minimum requirement. And then we have about 12.1 million in our fund 17. And at the bottom here, we listed the, you, the future plan for, to use those reserves. For example, in the general fund, we also, we have to set aside about 490,000 overall for the cash and the store inventory and the prepaid expenditures. And then in the fun, in the fun 17, here are the plan that how we're going to use the reserves in the future. So basically, we're going to fully use our access reserves and we're not going to have any access reserve in the future.
Scott, I know I have young eyes, but you zoom in a little bit more so that we can see, see, see it on the screen there. Perfect. Thank you. So thank you, Wendy, for, for mentioning that, that we do have a plan to spend out the reserves. So appreciate.
Yes, yeah, based on our current projection.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
To conduct a public hearing.
Yeah, to conduct. Yes, we will need to hold a public hearing first and then to adopt this. Right, yeah, so a motion to conduct a public hearing.
We have a motion to conduct a public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion in the second. Any additional discussion? This is a roll call vote. Vice President Yip Tron?
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann?
Yes.
Board Member Si? Board Member Neil?
Yes.
Board Member Norwood, yes.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Scott, while we're waiting, while we have the public hearing open, is there any public comments from the public?
We have no hands raised at this time and no public comment.
We have no hands raised and no public comment. So we will conclude the public hearing.
So a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second on the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion? It's a roll call vote. Vice President Yip Tron?
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann?
Yes.
Board Member Si?
Yes.
Board Member Neil?
Yes.
Board Member Norwood, yes. Item 3, adopt resolution 2021 dot 44 to approve the 2021, 22 education protection account spending plan, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Yes, this document is also part of our 21, 22 budget adoption document. Every year we will need to disclose our expenditure plan under the Education Protection Act EPA. The EPA is also part of the LCFF funding. And you can see the screen here. And the, we're required to spend the funds on instruction-related expenditures. So what we did, we're estimating about 2 million for the EPA funds. And we're going to spend on classroom teacher salaries. And we're, so we're in compliance with the requirement. And tonight we'll just ask the board to adopt this resolution.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any additional discussion? Scott, are there any comments from the public?
There are no public comments at this time.
Vice President Yip?
Actually, as I speak, hand raised. We have Michelle Kessinger. Michelle, we are going to enable your audio. Take yourself off mute and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, yes, I just want clarification. I know in one of the documents, it said California State Employees Association, what, as the bargaining unit? It's not the California State. It's California School Employees Association?
Thank you for that clarification.
Which document, Michelle, are you referring to?
Um, is the doc, oops. Can you hear me still? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. I was reviewing the board packet and one of the documents that explains, actually, I believe it's the, the document that you send to the county. It states that it says California State, and I just want to make sure that that's changed before it's sent in. It should say California School. It's the one that, that you have to get the approval from the county on the budget.
Are you talking about the AB 1200 disclosure?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, we're not there yet.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Which one is that one? Okay.
I just want to make sure it's clarified before it goes forward. Thank you. I apologize for jumping the gun.
No.
So the number five is okay. Then, I'm not so sure what document you're, but.
I'll pull it up and I'll, I'll raise my hand again when the time comes.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, this is a roll call vote. Vice President Yip Tron?
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann?
Yes.
Board Member Si?
Yes.
Board Member Neil?
Yes.
Board Member Norwood, yes. The item 3, the resolution passes. Item 4, conduct one reading and adopt the proposed revision to existing board policy. 7210, facilities planning, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Right, so tonight we would like the board to adopt this proposed facility financing board policy. And we have attached the old, the current board policy as the first attachment. The one I'm sharing here with you is the proposed changes. Actually, the major changes here is oh. I have to reshare. Okay, so bas- basically, okay, let me share.
Wendy, if you want, I can share it while you're talking.
It just doesn't move. So maybe this one. Okay, so now this one can move. Okay, the one, the yellow highlight is this number, item number seven. This is the new changes to reflect the state facility funds. Because for few years, the state funds is not available for facilities. But now the state are, they, their school bond has been passed. So there are funds available. That is the part of the application we got received from the state for our medals, the 16.5 million. That's because of the state facility program is ongoing now. And then to reflect that change, we will also need to add this into our board policy as one of the methodology for school district to be able to apply and to help our facility funding. We will approve 10 of this if you can bring in the 10 of the 16.5. Well, we hope.
Thank you for that. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, no, to conduct the reading and adopt the proposal.
We have a motion in the second?
Second.
Are there any additional comments on this item? Are there any comments from the public?
There are no public comments at this time.
We have a roll call vote. Board President Norwood, yes. Or Vice President Yip Tron?
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann?
Yes.
Board Member Si?
Yes.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Item, uh, item action seventeen, action item A five, conduct public hearing and certify the twenty twenty-one compensation disclosure. Of the California School Employees Association, chapter two eighty-one collective bargaining agreement, assistant superintendent business services.
Right, this is the, uh, AB twelve hundred, uh, document that we would disclose the financial impact. For our bargaining agreement with CSEA. And here we did say California School Employees Association, so that is our CSEA bargaining unit. And let me share. Okay, can you guys see this calculation, I'll just quickly walk you through.
California State.
So at the top of that document, it says California State Employees Association.
Oh, I see, so this is should be California School Employee Association, okay, got it, okay, so we'll make that changes then.
Thank you, Michelle.
So we're, we're gonna be asked to conduct a public hearing and certify.
Right. So basically, the, um, the disclosure here is the four percent salary, uh, increase ongoing. Yeah, that is the cost of five hundred sixty-three thousand listed here. And then with a hundred dollar medical cap increase effective, uh, July one, twenty twenty-one. And since that impact will be next year, so in current year, there will be no financial impact right now. And then the following pages, uh, just, uh, is to list, uh, the multi-year projections with these changes. Since we have to use the second interim as our projection here, this projection is outdated. We have already updated our budget adoption, uh, for the coming year and the subsequent two years. And so this disclosure basically certified is that. It is able to make it financially.
So the motion would be to conduct a public hearing and certify the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one compensation disclosure. With the update of the language. To to reflect California School Employees Association versus California State.
Right.
Okay. So who's making that motion?
So motion to conduct a public hearing and certify the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one compensation disclosure of the California School, uh, Employees Association. With the modification of the language of the California School Employee Association, uh, versus the California State Employee. Uh, Association.
Thank you, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any additional discussion? Any additional comments from the public?
No comments at this time.
It's roll call vote, Board President Norwood, yes. Or Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Or Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
Um, we have now opened the public hearing. Seeing that there are no comments from the public. Um, and Scott is not, there are not additional hands raised, we are now going to, uh, close the public hearing, is there a motion? We have a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to close the public hearing, this is a roll call vote. Board member Norwood, yes, board member Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
The public hearing is now closed.
Now we need to certify.
Yes, we'll need to certify this, uh, document.
Right, okay. Is there a motion to certify?
Motion to certify the compensation disclosure.
We have a motion to certify the compensation disclosure agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any comments from the public?
There are no hands raised at this time.
You all right, Scott?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Um, just for clarity, I'd just like to amend the motion to say with the modification of the California, uh, School Employee Association. Versus California State Employee Association.
Thank you, thank you, may I have that? Then motion is amended, is there any objection to the amended emotion? Okay, um, roll call vote, Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Or Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
Uh, board member Norwood, yes. The. The item has been certified.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number.
Six, certified disclosure of the MMA Management Association Agreement Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Yes, uh, for the management group normally we're not required to do, uh, the financial disclosure. But as a good practice for our district, we still disclose the financial impact. And so for the, for the management group and the, again, we're also going, going to offer the four percent salary increase. Effective July one, twenty twenty, and that cost is listed here. Is about three hundred forty-eight thousand. And also we're going to offer the hu- a hundred dollar medical cap increase effective July one, twenty twenty-one. So that financial impact will be for next year. And the, the multi-year projection here also, we use the second interim projection for the subsequent years. And in this certification, it shows that with the transfer from our reserve fund, we were able to, uh, make. The, for this settlement financially. So we're just ask the board to accept this certification then.
Uh, Wendy?
Yes.
I, I don't know if you make one change on one form, will it change the whole, uh, set of forms? Because this one is also say California State.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is for the management group and this is, we, we're, we don't need, even need to submit this to the county.
All right.
So we don't have to change here, yeah, but if, yeah, we'll make this template change, update it.
Okay.
For the future use.
Okay, there's a motion on the table.
Move to sort of, uh, move to certify the disclosure from the PDS Management Association Agreement.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, roll call vote. Uh, Scott, are there any, um, public comments?
There are no public comments at this time.
Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Or Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
Board member Norwood, yes. Item seventeen. A six, uh, is passes certified. Seventeen B, Human Relations, Classified Salary Schedule Adjustments for twenty twenty-one school year between, uh, California School. Employees Association, CSEA, chapter two eighty-one, and MUSD Assistant Superintendent Human Relations.
Thank you, President Norwood, um, thank you, Wendy, for the disclosure to the county that we can afford to do this, uh, increase for employees. Uh, the district and CSCF ten will be agreed on the twenty twenty-one, um, uh, agreement for. A four percent increase across the board for classified employees, uh, retroactive to July one, twenty twenty. We also agreed that we'd increase the, uh, cost of each full-time employee's health insurance by a hundred dollars. To now, uh, represent one thousand seventy-one per month and prorate that for our part-time employees. We also agreed on article seventeen point three probationary period. That our new employees shall be six months probation, it used to be nine months. We also, um, would put in there a current employee serving a new classification can, uh, ser- serve for four months. And if the manager deems it necessary, they can extend that probationary period an additional two months. For our permanent employees, the probationary period will, uh, in a new classification resulting from a promotion. Will be four months during a scheduled work year and for that class, it will run concurrently, uh, with an original probationary period. And if applicable, app- applicable, a two-month, um, approval from Human Relations Assistant Superintendent or designee can move forward. We also have a new classification, uh, that's going to be adopted into, um, our classified, uh, ranks, uh, formerly known as campus. Uh, I'm sorry, noon duty now will be known as campus monitor, we agreed to attach their job description to the tentative agreement. And that they will all start at range two and step four upon hiring. And the language of our co- collective bargaining, uh, agreement will remain the same except for changes as indicated in the salary schedule. And the aforementioned summary that I just presented. And, um, this tentative agreement is being presented to the board for its consideration and approval. Um, for the salary increases, uh, to the salary schedule, the medical cap increase as well as article seventeen, eighteen new language. And appendix A and B for our new campus monitors. I'd also like to thank at this time, again, Michelle Kessinger and her team, uh, Suzette Brahmanjan, Lori Louis, Norma Morales. Rita Wilson, Sherry Ames, Abner Ames, Faruni Ragnapon and Jeff Simon for their, uh, work and dedication throughout this process. Also, uh, the team representing the district of Damon, Damon James, Heather Forsyth, Kano, Brian Shreve, Sandy Huen, uh, Laurie Armino. And of course, Wendy, thank you for your help and support and we present this tentative agreement for your approval this evening.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the classified salary schedule adjustment for the twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Scott, any public comments?
We have no public comments at this time.
Any additional discussion by board members? It's a roll call vote, Board Member Norwood, yes, Board Member Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
Congratulations, thank you, CSEA and team, uh, and leadership team on the district side as well, uh, for your hard work in making this happen. Uh, the motion carries. Item C Superintendent's Office, uh, C one recommendation for the MM, Mel Peters Management Association Compensation.
Uh, Scott, can you bring that up, please? Thank you. So similarly to our classified school employees and our, uh, Mel Peters Teachers Association. The Mel Peters Management Association has recommended that they receive the same four percent. And the hundred dollar increase on medical and the fifteen hundred dollar stipend for preparing in-person learning and distance learning.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the recommendation for MMA.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, are there any additional discussion on this item? This is a roll call vote. Board President Norwood, yes, or Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Or Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, super, um, uh, board bylaw nine. Nine two five zero reimbursement remuneration and other benefits superintendent.
Uh, Scott, would you please bring this bylaw up? Well, Scott is bringing that up on an annual basis, uh, board bylaw ninety-two fifty. Um, provides for the board to increase by five percent. The monthly stipend that board members receive for their services, currently that stipend is four hundred and forty-one dollars. And so by approving the recommendation, uh, to enact this bylaw. Which coincides with education code, the, um. Education Code thirty-five one twenty, the board's stipend would then be increased by five percent.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? We have a motion in the second, is there any public comment?
There are no public comments at this time.
Roll call vote, uh, Board President Chris Norwood, yes, or Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Or Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item. Um, under human rela- under Superintendent's Office, item three, approval of the amendment to the employment agreement. With the Superintendent Superintendent's Office. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Superintendent's Employment Agreement. Effective January one, two thousand seventeen, SB one four three six requires pursuant to the California Government. Main Code, section not five four nine five three, that a verbal summary of the proposed compensation. And fringe benefits be given to the public prior to the final board action on a local agency executive employment agreement. Superintendent Jordan's current agreement provides that, that upon the receipt of a satisfactory evaluation. The superintendent's salary shall be adjusted at a percentage rate equal to the percentage rate awarded to other just districts certificated. Management employees, based on the board satisfactory evaluation of the superintendent, the board also wishes to implement an extension. To the term of the superintendent's agreement by one year through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Accordingly, the for- the proposed Fourth Amendment to the Superintendent's Employment Agreement contains the following materials. The term of the superintendent's agreement will be extended by one year more than the current term running through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Superintendent's annual base salary would increase by four percent retroactive to July one, twenty twenty. Based on the increase given for the same period to the members of the Mel Peters Managers Association. The amendment would therefore increase the superintendent's salary from two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine. Dollars to two hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-six cents. The district's contribution to the superintendent's health insurance benefits effective of July one, twenty twenty would be increased by one hundred dollars per month. To a total of one thousand seventy-one per month, again, consistent with the increase given to the board. Given by the board to the Mel Peters Managers Association. The copy of the fourth agreement is available from the district office upon request and the copy has been added to the online agenda for this meeting. We will now commence with the consideration of this item. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval of amendment to employment agreement with superintendent.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, is there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public at this time.
Thank you, this is a roll call vote, Board Member Norwood, yes. Um, are there is, are there any? Additional discussion on this item? By the board?
No.
No.
Okay. Um, without any additional discussion. The vote, uh, Board Member Norwood, yes. Board Member, uh, Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board member Si.
No.
Board member. Neil.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Item D. Learning and Development, D one, adopt resolutions twenty twenty-one dot forty-two, approving child development contract. CSP dash one five six four and resolution twenty twenty-one dot four-three, approving child development contract. CCTR dash one two eight one with the CDE for the twenty-one, twenty-one school year, Assistant Superintendent Learning and Development.
Thank you, uh, President Norwood, and this item, um, is, we're asking the board to please adopt the resolutions. To resolutions that in adopting those resolutions, you will be approving the two contracts that we have, uh, to run the childhood development center. As well as to the general childcare and development programs.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dot forty-two and twenty twenty-one dot forty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, are there any comments from the public?
No comments from the public at this time.
Are there any additional items by the board? Are there any additional items by the board? Any additional discussion from the board? So roll call vote. Board Member Norwood, yes. Board Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board Member Si.
Yes.
Board Member Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez, for hanging out with us.
Item D two, formally adopt the twenty twenty-one District Local Control and Accountability Plan.
Thank you, uh President Norwood and board members. It gives me a great pleasure to bring to you the um District Local Control Accountability Plan for the twenty-one twenty-two um school academic year as part of the California Code Sections five two zero six oh and five two zero seven seven. I uh we conducted a public hearing on June eighth as well as a um study session. And uh we have made the adjustments that were required by the public and um as of late uh last night, we haven't received any more um changes to the LCAP and so liked uh for the board to formally approve the plan.
So if we don't approve this plan, does that mean you have to stay?
No, because you accepted my my um my letter of resignation, my retirement.
Okay, well. Thank you. Uh this most likely will not be your last accountability plan. I just want you to know that. Is there a motion?
Move to uh uh adopt the LCAP plan.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott, are in there in stereo. That first? Okay. We have to make sure to get it on the record. Who said it first? Okay, Scott, are there any comments from the public?
No comments from the public, and I had uh Board Clerk Lee Ann by a hair.
Okay.
Uh just a quick clarification question. Uh Ms. Rodriguez, uh when you talked about uh parent engagement, uh that included the special ed uh advocacy parent groups as well, right?
Absolutely. Uh we actually had a uh very fruitful uh meeting with our parent, a special education parent group on, what was it, the seventeen? And uh we did a walkthrough of the special education plan and how it aligns to each of the items uh on the LCAP.
Great, thank you.
Since we on that item, does anyone uh know the number of students for especially in our district?
I believe we have around nine hundred, um less than thousand. Mary Jude?
Mike, Mike coming.
Sorry. Um last, when we did the audit, it was at one thousand and three uh students, but with the students graduating, et cetera, it's it's under a thousand at this point. I could probably pull it up for you, want an exact number um pretty quick.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other item for discussion? Thank you. Is there a motion?
We did motion. It's a roll call vote.
Okay, I'm in time. We did that already. Right. Now we're in discussion. Okay, Board President Norwood, yes. Board Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann. Board Member Si.
Yes.
Board Member Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries your final. I don't want to see your final LCAP from USD. I'll just say the LCAP is adopted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item eighteen consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless board member unless board staff or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Are there any items? Okay, so we have um I have items uh or I have items pull eighteen A. Eighteen A eight, eighteen B one, and eighteen C one. Is there a motion? Eighteen A eight. Approve the resolution twenty dot twenty-one dot forty-five joint use agreement with Milpitas Aquatics Club. And then eighteen B one, that's approve the consultant agreement with counseling and support for Cassie. And then eighteen C one memorandum of understanding and agreement between Carisol Solus and Milpitas Unified School District for promoting health self health, safety and well-being of our students, staff, and parents.
Alright, move to approve consent items except for eighteen A eight, eighteen B one, and eighteen C one.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Scott.
There are no public comments at this time.
Are any any additional discussion? Um roll call vote. Board President Chris Norwood, yes. Board Vice President Kelly Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Han Liang. Board Member Michael Si.
Yes.
Board Member Men Neil.
Yes.
The consent items as list as defined have been adopted. Now we have the three items that have been pulled.
Zhang, would you please um just highlight for the board the process one more time for the um RFP?
Okay, definitely sure. And at the last board meeting, the board um approved a leasing agreement with Milpitas Aquatic um Group for our uh high school uh pool program. And this item, we tonight, we would like to make the lease agreement into a joint use agreement because the district is also going to use the pool for our own program. So it's not a complete lease. And the difference is if the district also going to use the property, then it will be a joint use. And also, I would like to share with the board that the district has followed the RFP process, the request for proposal, and we received the four proposals and the final two um candidate for this um uh uh for this contract, the top one is the Milpitas Aquatic um Group and the second one is the West Coast. And our district attorney has reviewed now the RFP document as well as our process. So tonight, we're just asking the board to uh adopt this resolution and for a joint use agreement with MAC.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments?
Uh just a quick comment. Uh Wendy Zhang, as far as the RFP process, any of the submissions could have made a public request of any of the proposals at any time of the process?
I believe they they can because we're a public entity and all the documents are subject for public record request.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um did anyone make public records requests?
I have not received any request yet.
So with that, I will move to approve the resolution.
Good. We have a motion to move approve resolution on eighteen A. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Scott.
Check, but there are no public comments at this time.
Thank you. More discussion. Board Member Norwood, yes. Board Vice President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Lee Ann.
Yes.
Board Member Si.
Yes.
Board Member Neil.
Yes.
Item eighteen A eight carries. Item eighteen B one, Cassie.
On this one item as well as Carisolus, uh we just wanted to pull it to remind uh the community as well as the board that as we begin to move out of COVID, that our learners and that includes all of our team members as well as parents and guardians. Uh we've had experiences of fifteen to sixteen months of shelter in place. Some people have not had opportunity to spend time with family or friends during that time. And it does create a certain sense of depression or trauma or uncertainty, and so this is why we are providing these services throughout the summer.
Thank you for that update, and thank you for letting us know that um those services will be available throughout the summer. And um they'll be available to our students and to our staff.
And to our parents.
And to our parents. Um and we plan on making that available, that awareness available to them. How?
Um we can put it on our social media as we've done already.
Okay. Thank you. Um is there a motion for item eighteen B one and eighteen C one?
Motion to approve eighteen B one. And do I make a separate?
Eighteen.
Okay, and eighteen C one.
We have a motion for eighteen B one and eighteen C one. Uh so we're pull for information only. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott.
We have no public comments at this time.
And any additional discussion by the board?
Uh the funding of these for the summer program is supported by the ELO grants as well too, or supplemental funding from that.
Yellow, yep.
Yellow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Board President Chris Norwood, yes. Board Vice President Kelly Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Han Liang. Board Member Michael Si.
Yes.
Board Member Men Neil.
Yes.
Yes, uh motion carries. Item nineteen. Data future board meetings, August twenty-fourth, beginning of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year tentative study session, five P M. Tend to close session, six P M. Open session, seven P M. Location is to be determined. September fourteenth tentative study session, five P M. Tend to close session, six P M. Open session, seven P M. Location to be determined. And the same for seventeen twenty-eight. Are there any additional ad- announcements or reminders? As this being our last official board meeting of the year, I'd like to thank everyone for their service, for their time, for their consideration, their dedication. Um I'd like to thank a very dynamic team that uh provided the opportunity for our community to view our board meetings in three different ways via Zoom, yeah, uh YouTube, was there one more?
In person.
In person.
And in person, when when the opportunity presented itself, uh you you guys really made us look good in terms of um the visibility within the community that it was available, regardless of the number of people that did attend. Uh they knew that we made these available and they're being recorded, and it's been very transparent in the process. So I really appreciate your efforts. Uh Mary Jude, thank you uh for continuing as you become a new member of our team, for being here uh for these late nights and for those that are still here uh attending um Michelle Kessinger, uh Tom Valori, uh saw some of the other folks here earlier tonight. We thank you tremendously for your effort, for your commitment, for your dedicated to Milpitas Unified School District. We truly made a difference in the lives of children, and we save lives. And I'd like to also provide that board uh members one opportunity for final comments before we uh adjourn this final meeting.
I want to wish everyone a great summer.
No, I just want to um thank uh our superintendent, you know, for an amazing year. I I know that it was tough and um with all the unexpected challenges that was thrown your way, you took it and um you know, all of our students who need a Chromebook, got a Chromebook, all the students um who were um needing uh meals, meals were provided. You have a a great staff. And um you made our district look very uh good, and I want to say thank you so much. And to my my fellow board members, thank you so much for being a great team to work with.
I'll just say this teamwork makes the dream work, as President Norwood always says. It's a model that the entirety of the folks here um continue to really adhere to, and I'm really looking forward to this fall. I'm really looking forward to seeing the parents, the students coming back to campus.
Yep, me too.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's definitely.
So I I want to say um that really we're we're going to be looking back at this whole period for for decades, if not a century as as to how this crisis unfolded. Um but thankfully, there is a light at the end of the tunnel now. And going forward, I I don't want us to to just go back to normal. I want us to go to back to better than normal.
Is there a motion?
To adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, and whether it's a second, this is a roll call. Board President Chris Norwood, yes. Board Vice President Kelly Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board Clerk Han Liang. Board Member Michael Si.
Yes.
Board Member Men Neil.
Yes.
Yes. Um thank you, everyone, again, for your service and your dedication.